Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here and apologize for the short delay. We did have a previous meeting that had us a little bit delayed, but the time is now 9:03. The date is Tuesday, August 16th. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to the health emergency, we continue to use the WebEx teleconferencing format platform. And so whether you've joined us by using the web or the teleconferencing format, we appreciate you joining us virtually. For those of you interested in commenting during unscheduled, please use the raise your hand feature online or try to get somebody's attention if you're on the phone. And every member will be limited to two minutes of public comment. Members in the audience this morning that have filled out speaker cards or have given sign language to the clerk will be called upon in the order in which the clerk puts the added you to the list. And you too will be given the opportunity to address the board under unscheduled. Each vote today will be verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each member has voted. After each motion and second, the there'll be a roll taken by district. So with that, in order to establish a quorum, I'm going to ask the clerk now to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson is absent. Richard Fagundes.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record show four members present, one absent. We've established quorum. We will be able to conduct business this morning. Now, if I can invite you all to please rise as we invite Ed Hill to deliver the invocation this morning and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Please join me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, enlighten us as we meet today so that we each have a clear understanding of our issues and what we need to discuss. Give us clarity on our purpose and what we should accomplish today. We also pray that you look over those in the throes of war and ask for their safety. We pray that you look over our men and women in uniform and ask for their safe return. We pray that you watch over those who have encountered hardships and losses during the most recent fires. We pray that you watch over Kings County, our constituents, and you bring water back to the valley. We ask these things in your Lord's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Now join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Lord. I give my life to the Lord. One invitation under God. The invisible. Thank you very much. It's now that portion of the agenda where we will invite those wishing to address the board under unscheduled. And does the clerk have a record of anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
I have no written correspondence, but I do understand that Dave Robinson would like to speak.
Very good. Thank you. Good morning, Sheriff. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. I'll be very brief. On November 7th, the Kings County Board of Realtors is holding a golf tournament fundraiser to raise funds for our K-9 program at the sheriff's office. And I'll leave a couple of those with the clerk. The the cool thing about this year is if you're not a golfer, you can also do some type of sponsorship. And they are individually selling $100 tickets for a grand prize of a new golf cart or a second prize of an electric bike. So even if you're not a golfer, you can support the K-9 program at the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Also, Sheriff, I picked this thing up at the Thursday night market. What's it do?
It's supposed to help your mentality.
How can you tell if you don't have a good baseline? I'll work on that, though. Thanks, Nate. Did you? You you increased so much, you got off the scale? That's it. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Anyone else under unscheduled?
I have Kristi Lee.
Very good. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning again. Kristi Lee, Assessor Clerk Recorder. This morning, I wanted to officially introduce Tim Kokendorfer. He is the new Assistant Assessor Clerk Recorder. Tim has been with the office a little over a year, but came to Kings County with an abundance of experience. He started with Tulare County with the assessor's office there in 2002 as an appraiser. And he worked his way up to Assistant Assessor in that county. Over the last year, Tim has been integral in working to get our new property system implemented successfully and this year's role closed. Tim is married with three amazing young adult children, and his wife's family owns Hoffman's Nursery. Tim will be assisting with customer issues, assisting to expand outreach, helping with appeals, and also working to develop staff as a few of his new duties. Tim is also available this morning to say a few words if you'd like.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. I am Tim Kokendorfer, your new Assistant Assessor. I want to take just a moment to publicly thank Chrissy for her confidence in my ability to help serve the people of this county along with her. In the last 24 years, I have both lived, worked, and raised a family off and on in Kings County. And I am pleased to bring my skill set here to help serve them. In my 24 or my 20 years now of property tax assessment experience, I've done everything from an appraiser trainee to a department administrator. And I am pleased to bring those skills here to potentially help with the issues in our office. Part of my career, I've really tried to focus on the fact that bringing efficiency, customer service, and some type of rationalism to each position and organization I've served in. And my plan is to continue that in this office with Christie. As a portion of that, we are creating a new role for me. And I would like to inform the board, I will now be the taxpayer advocate in our office. So if you have folks in your districts who have questions or concerns about their property taxes, please feel free to refer them to me in the future. I look forward to working alongside all of you in the next several years. And if you ever have questions or concerns or your staff does, please feel free to refer them to me.
Thank you. Welcome. Good thing. Congratulations. With that, is there anyone else?
That's all that I'm aware of in-house. And it appears that Rebecca Bell has her hand raised.
Okay.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I have a question. Even I was exposed to some actually privy information, but actually it was exposed actually in the sun. With my problem is still with Vidovic or Vidovicchi. I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name right. But anyway, it's already kind of sad to know that he's already trying to infiltrate the Board of Supervisors because I found out that his lackey Chavez received most of his campaign funding from him. So that's got me kind of worried. So if he can be able to manipulate the system in the Board of Supervisors, then what's to say that he's not going to drive the city? He already belongs to two water councils. And he also, he actually should have excluded himself when he was introducing his business into that. He should not have been allowed to vote on that. So what do you guys? I know you guys can't answer this question, but I just want to put it out there. What are you guys doing, going to do in regards to water reform to where the Kings County water stays in Kings County? Because at the moment, the reason why Vidovicchi was able to manipulate that or take advantage of a law that wasn't there. So we need some more water reform and also to update it where it should not be allowed to anybody that has a business should not be allowed to decide whether they have access to the water or not because that's biased. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there. And it's just, it's frustrating because you try to do the right thing. And and it's not much. I understand that Boswell is against him. So but for him to use the water before it goes down to LA, you're soaking land that in the future Vidovicchi is going to buy anyway. So he still has access to the water. And I don't know what's what you guys can do to to where you can stop the advantage from other people taking advantage of our water source. So that's my say on that.
Good. Thank you, Rebecca.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know we don't respond, and I'm not responding, but I do at least want, and counsel could correct me, but I just want to point out the phrase that Mr. Vidovic has infiltrated the Board of Supervisors. She's referring to a candidate who's not a county supervisor at this moment or no guarantee anyone in the future. That being said, she's referring to campaign funds to a candidate. And so that candidate's not seated here, therefore is not infiltrated. The board is seated by, so I want to protect that.
Sorry, I meant infiltrating.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other unscheduled comments online? Do you see any?
I am not aware of any.
Very good. Last call for in chambers. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close out the unscheduled comments and move on to the next item, which is a reporting out of the closed session that occurred on August 9th. And Diane, do you have a report?
There were no takes, actions taken in closed session on August 9th that require reporting.
Very good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from that August 9th meeting. Have members had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Additional questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show four members in present in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. And there are multiple items on the consent calendar this morning from a variety of departments. Have board members had an opportunity to review the consent calendar?
There's no question or comments. I'll make a motion to approve the consent counter as presented.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley. Additional questions, comments, or clarifications on the consent calendar? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show four in favor, one absent. The consent calendar has been approved. Moving to regular agenda items of the morning. The first item comes from the job training office and discussion on the Kings County Small Business Grant Funding. Lance, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. The item before you this morning is a item to ask for contracting authority for the job training office connected to the $6 million in ARPA small business funding that was voted by the Board of Supervisors to roll out starting September 1st. In the previous program, we executed all contracts within the department. However, I wanted to see the temperature of the board or gauge the temperature of the board on how they would like us to proceed. We are well equipped to bring all of those contracts to the board if they so desire and be on about a two-week rotation pursuant to the current board agenda item schedule that we have currently. Or we can execute those in-house. In-house will allow us to cut the checks a little bit faster, but it's not substantially. So that being said, if you guys will recall, this program is broken down with per capita allocations for each county. The NOFA, which will go out later this week, will indicate that those portions at three months, we will bring back to the board. For your guys' vote on whether or not you want to move those allocations, you want to move them around or make them general like last time. However, the item before you today, of course, is on the contracting authority. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lance. Supervisor Valley.
Yes, just for clarification, you said broken down by county, but you mean districts, right?
So it's actually a per capita. Last time it was voted for a per capita application or wow, per capita allocation by municipality and the county unincorporated areas to really give those, especially the smaller municipalities, Corcoran, Avon, all the more, a more dedicated portion that they can pull off of the leash initially. But we do plan to bring that back after three months if those portions aren't being utilized very fully.
Yes, and we roll them back over. But but I like that because it gives people a sense of, I don't, not not protection, but hey, I don't need to worry about someone else coming in and getting all the money. So I like that, and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
That you put that you put that there. And as far as bringing these back before the board, I think you and your 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 team did an outstanding job last time where bringing it back is not necessary, right? Each for each vote, for a vote on on all these, you've, I think the integrity of the program stood last time, has a lot of money in a mad rush at a difficult time. And I think things are a lot more settled now to where, you know, you don't, you don't have to feel like you need to break a leg, get rushing these out the door. Just take your time and execute like like you guys did last time.
Appreciate that, sir. And I would point out, county council pulled out all the stops again this time. They literally turned around our draft contract in about a week, which is utterly amazing considering the draft form that I initially wrote and sent to them. So all credit, they've actually been a huge help in pushing this thing forward.
All right. Good job.
Supervisor.
Yeah, I have faith in the economic development staff. I think they're did a great job last time. And I don't want to stand in the way, so you got to do what you did last time and take care of our business owners.
Thank you, sir.
See, Verboon pointed out, or what was you telling me last week, Seif, that compared to Fresno County, our percentage?
Yeah, Fresno County, I think, had 7 million. They they got like 1.5 million people, and we put 6 million. We got 151,000. I don't know what the percentage is on that, but I don't think Fresno has interests of businesses in their heart.
Interestingly, we ran the per capita investment for Kings County. And this is very unofficial because we don't know every program. But the per capita investment was a little over $50 per resident, which the next closest one was about $12 per resident. So it's a pretty substantial. The support in Kings County for small business is substantial, and that cannot be argued. I don't know if it's still the number one. Unfortunately, there's so many other programs out there, we can't tell, but it is very substantial.
Well, I think, you know, for all of us here, we sit on, I think I sit on 12 or 14 committees. Not one protects the business owner in our community and or the taxpayer. So I think it's important that we change that. We take care of people that can't take care of themselves, but at the same time, we got to take care of the business owners first. That way, we have funds to help people that can't help themselves. So with this going through, I think that helps keeping everybody solvent and paying their taxes. And hopefully, we can make it through the downturn if we have one, depending on which side you're on, if we have a downturn. But we need to take care of the people to take care of us.
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve and leave it in your hands to execute.
Thanks, sir.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley. Is there additional discussion?
Yeah. So I'll make a comment. And the comment is, you know, we read in the media a lot of stuff that happens, and a lot of it is a negative. This is a positive thing, and I have not read anything about it in the paper yet. So if the Hanford Sentinel is listening, you know, it's your job to bring peace in our community and not cause divide. And this is something that is a positive thing for our community. And I'd like to see something positive written about it in our local newspaper.
Yes, sir. And I will just add that I got heads up yesterday. This is going to be, well, thank you for coming to Corcoran last Wednesday for the check presentation at Lake Bottom. And they're going to run the photo with some notes on the front page tomorrow.
Good deal.
They have a copy of the tab?
Hey, we didn't do anything. He was in and out 10 minutes.
I know. He showed up at the meeting.
Not even.
That's why I thought maybe, no, no.
He's dedicated.
Exactly. No, no, absolutely.
Said no.
With that, any other further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, four in favor, one absent. Good luck, Lance.
I drink him for Tuesdays.
Water. The next item on the agenda comes from Public Works regarding the Notice of Completion. And Dominic, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dominic Tamburski, Public Works Department. And before your board this morning, you request the chairman to sign the Notice of Completion so staff may finalize the project and start the clock towards release of retention for the Kings County Sheriff's Operations Building Site Improvement Contract. On September 1st of 2020, your board authorized awarding of the project DH Williams Construction Incorporated for the site development of the new Sheriff's Operations Building constructed on Kings County Drive adjacent to the county jail. The DH Williams scope of work included constructing the foundation, providing utility connections, and constructing the parking area. The modular building structure is under separate contract with JTS Modular. Construction on this project began in October of 2020 and was completed June 1st of 2022. Over the course of the project, we had three change orders due to unforeseen scope changes and city fire inspection fees, which increased the original contract amount of $581,000 to just under $732,000. If approved by your board today, staff will move forward with the contract 5% retention released no less than 35 days after the Notice of Completion records. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good. Thank you, Dominic. Questions, comments, concerns?
My only only concern would be that we don't, we approve this project. I think it is complete, but we need to keep it, keep in mind, we did some changes to get it finished under budget. So there are some improvements we need to look towards the future, which would be covering the stairs in the future. So let's keep that in mind. Can we have any extra funding? We need to finish the project like it was designed for. With that, I'll make a motion to approve completion of the project.
Good. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley. Is there additional question or comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show the item stands approved, four in favor with one absent. Thank you, Dominic. Appreciate it. That concludes all of the action items on today's agenda. We'll now move to board member announcements or reports on their own initiative. Board members may make brief announcements or reports on their own activities. Supervisor Verboon.
I went down last week, went down to Lake Bottom, and Supervisor Valley and I had a check that Catherine got for us, a little $6 million on it. And we presented it to Lake Bottom with a little photo op in front of their sign painted in their in their little bar there, restaurant. And after that, I went over and did, I don't know what it was called, but it's a public workshop for the F-35, F-16s, National Guard Fighter Wing, 144th, right?
Yes.
And talked to a couple of pilots there. Interesting that what, we're under attack all the time by other countries and what they do to keep people away from us on the West Coast and what they fly every single day. So I had pictures of, you know, Russian bombers coming towards San Francisco on July 4th one year. And it's amazing that, you know, we're not well-liked in the community. People want what we have. So I did that on the on the Thursday, I believe, or Wednesday. And then got a call last night from Nathan Alonso from PG&E. And he would like us to support a bill, send a bill 884 for undergrounding electrical lines in the future. He'd like to have it before Thursday. I can only bring it up now. I couldn't download the bill on my phone, but I could do it on my work computer. But basically taking the power lines that are overhead and put them all underground, which is something I've always looked at, making improvement for our community. And I've worked with PG&E and Dominic or Chuck, one of them on underground for, one of our farmers wants to go underground underneath the road so he doesn't have a problem in the future. So I think it's important that we look at this. I know the nicer communities in Long Beach Coastal Area, all powers underground, and we should probably support this bill. If there's any, the board would like to do that. Have Catherine drop the little support letter for Ed and Diane.
Correct me again, or please help me understand, what day does it need to be submitted by?
Thursday.
This Thursday? Like two days from now?
We can do it individually.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the safest way in order to comply with the Brown Act, to to do it individually.
I thought. Can't we apologize if we do it wrong?
Counsel, I thought it was all right for any board member to request some action during the board meeting during this specific time, as long as there was a consensus.
Well, you can direct staff to go and bring something back. You can, you can by consensus do that. But something that is an actual act of the board, an informal and official act of the board, can't just be added by consensus to the calendar without notice of the public. It would deprive the public of the opportunity to comment on that item. But certainly, you can by consensus direct staff to take an action such as bring a letter back for consideration.
But not in the right time. Anyway, with that said.
Either that or have, if executive officer, go ahead and.
Yeah, I also have Joe can write a letter and sign it on our behalf. Correct? Yeah.
Either that or have Ed sign it.
Ed.
Have staff do it.
I think that would be appropriate direction. You can, you can, you know, direct staff to.
Direct staff to drop the support letter for SB 884.
Yeah, because especially if it backfires, I'd rather have Ed be in the crosshairs than me.
All right. Okay, got that.
Yeah.
Also, on, I think it was Wednesday, I attended the safety luncheon presented by the Greater Kings County Chamber.
And Hanford.
At Hanford. It was very well attended, not as well organized as I'd like to see. I think I was reading the agenda and, or the Craig Peters was the emcee, but no one told him. So.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Need a better communication on that. But it was well, it's in the event, well-needed in our community. We had a lot of people that were presented awards, so. And Joe, Joe did a good job with the prayer. So very inspiring.
Very inspiring. Yeah, right. Moving right along.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Valley.
Yes, Chairman, I just want to just note for the record again and thanks, Super Boom, coming to Corcoran. There are a lot of, just like everywhere else, there's a lot of excited business owners right now towards getting around on the on the opportunities, start applying, starting September 1st. Also took the check to Kettelman City on Saturday to do a, the community got together in regards to the 351,000 that the Board of Supervisors allocated for the Kettelman City Foundation. So they had a little community event at the community center. Some of the organizations came out and helped sponsor, I know Waste Management did cupcakes. Someone did free tacos for everyone, and we presented the check. So on behalf of the community, Kettelman City, they said to relay their thank you to everybody. So they appreciate that support. And I think that is, oh, lastly, I do want to thank the Kings County Veterans Services Department. We know how hard they work. I had the opportunity as as a veteran to apply for something that that had been on my mind for a while and something that was previously declined a while back. But one of the Veterans Service reps took the time, filled out my claimant on Thursday. I got news that I got an approval and a rating through the through the VA on a service-connected claim. So I want to thank the Veterans Service Staff for their hard work that they do on that on behalf of all the veterans. And so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thanks. Supervisor Fagundes.
Last Wednesday, we had an employee left, Jim Burscher, Jim Burscher. He left with Fresno State. And we took him to Corcoran, Lake Bottom for lunch, five of us. And we enjoyed lunch, and it was a good lunch. And then on that, Jim Hook gave me a tour of Corcoran. Well, five of us.
Well, that park doesn't represent just Corcoran.
I found places that you never showed.
I show you the good part. Jimmy, what are you doing, man?
But anyway, we enjoyed getting together with with Jim. And then on Friday morning, we had a little, also enough to get together with the staff here at the park, Joe was involved. Then Friday morning, later on, we had, I had lunch with Brian Thorburn. We had a little project going on Fifth Avenue, replacing some poles. And I called Brian, and he come out. And some of those poles were a little over 100 years old. So they're in the process of changing them. They've already changed the poles, but they can't take the old ones out because there's a hawk in one of the poles that they can't move on.
You put those poles in?
It was after my time. Is that what you wanted to hear? I want to make you feel good. No, but anyway, that's all I had. And it was a good deal for him moving on and all the projects that we got going.
Do you eat the frog legs at Lake Bottom?
Frog legs? Jimmy? Order a frog leg? Same thing.
One's got feathers. Good. What'd you have for lunch?
I had a barbecued sandwich, beef sandwich.
Good.
It was good. You can hardly finish it, it's so big.
You have leftovers for dinner?
I don't like leftovers.
Oh, okay. Well, good, thank you. My two attended the public safety appreciation luncheon at the Hanford Civic. 12 individuals were recognized for their dedication and service to the community, and we certainly want to thank them and everybody that did it. Also, that day, the Kings County Association of Governments held a special meeting and a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the 2022 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Communities Strategy. Those documents are online, if you'd like to review those at the Kings County Association of Governments website. We also reviewed the air quality conformity analysis and worked on a couple of scenarios and picked out a scenario that will be up for selection on the August 24th meeting. Continue to review and approve well applications for South Fort Kings. 'Tis the season, many wells towards the end of the season are running out of water and having problems, and so they're having to drill new wells. A lot of them are extending the pipes and making them a little bit longer and getting down a little bit deeper into the different aquifers, but unfortunately, many of those are just having to be replaced. The American Legion Breakfast took place on Friday, it was a nice event. Tim Bashir's had donuts for that deal, and then the Board of Equalization hearings that we took place on Friday. Lemoore Raceway continues to have action on Saturday. We had about 60 cars, delayed it because of the heat, and it was a pretty nice day, evening of racing. Kings County Homeless Meeting yesterday took place. We reviewed a lot of the information. There are, there is a dashboard that will be talking about some of the services available to homeless individuals, as well as the numbers served, and got an update on a lot of those numbers. Want to congratulate Rick Bray. He builds custom motorcycles. His brother works for the ag commissioner. He got the best, or super radical and best of show in the Sturgis, South Dakota Bike Rally, and so we certainly want to congratulate him on a job well done, and continues to put Kings County on the map with his abilities and skills. And then the heat warning for the rest of the week, they are talking about high heat, and so watch out, drink plenty of fluids. With many of the schools going back in session, means a lot of the sports are also going to be taking the fields, and so whether they're playing football, or water polo, or any other sport that's going on, I think there's some soccer going on, some tennis. So if you go out and support those young people and their athletic abilities, make sure you take appropriate actions to stay cool. With that, and then the F-35, as Supervisor Verboon pointed out, its only location is Lemoore. There are some redeployments of a couple of other, or the F-15, or?
15.
Yeah, and, but it is not under consideration for Lemoore. The F-35 is the only air chassis that's being considered for deployment in the Lemoore area. So that information is also online, and I think there's a virtual town hall meeting, and I'm sure Mr. Hill will bring up that information as well. With that, that concludes the board member announcement part. Mr. Hill, do you have a list of board correspondence, upcoming events, and future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board received correspondence from the Kings County Commission on Aging regarding the sale of a limited supply of $50 farmers market coupon books for those 60 years of age and older. For questions, please contact Antoina at 559-852-2828. Your board also received correspondence from the Kings County Commission on Aging regarding a celebration of Independence of Mexico on September 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Burris Park. We will be adding this to our events list moving forward. For upcoming events, the National Guard Bureau and the Department of Air Force invite the public to learn about the proposal to locate F-35 aircraft in Lemoore Naval Air Station. An informational meeting will be, to learn more about this proposal, will be held virtually on Thursday, August 25th, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. The City of Avonale and Self-Health Enterprise will be hosting a rural utilities workshop for those impacted by COVID-19 on August 17th, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Avonale Recreation Center located at 717 East Monterey Street in Avonale. For more information, please call 559-802-1600. There will be three SB 1383 Organic Waste and Recycling Workshops that will highlight the implementation here in the county, as the public will gain information about the requirements of this bill. The dates are as follows, Tuesday, August 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Central Union School District, 15783 18th Avenue in Lemoore. Wednesday, August 24th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Pioneer Union Elementary School, 8810 14th Avenue in Hanford, and Thursday, August 25th, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the City of Corcoran Council Chambers, 1015 Chittenden Avenue, Corcoran Avenue. Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Okay. SoCal Gas has teamed up with Reading Heart nonprofit and the City of Corcoran for a countywide book fair. Their goal is to do the first-of-its-kind citywide book giveaway. The plan is to give away more than 25,000 books. The big book event is on August 26th and will be held downtown Corcoran from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. on Whitley Avenue, next to the Christmas tree. The Hanford Chamber of Commerce will be hosting its bizball pickleball tournament on Saturday, August 27th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Hanford Pickleball Course located at 1010 Grangeville Boulevard. Registration is $60 per team, and one of the players must be employed by a local business. The Central Valley Blood Center has contacted Kings County because their blood supplies are critically low. Please consider giving or donating the Gift of Life on Monday, August 29th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The bus will be here on campus. Scheduling your appointment will be online only. Please visit their website for registration. The Kings County Sheriff Posse will be holding their annual dinner, dance, and crab feed September 10th. The event is being held at Burris Park. Tickets are 150 per person, which includes all-you-can-eat crab and tri-tip. Must be 21 years of age or older to attend. If you'd like to purchase tickets, please email Amy Van Kemp, or excuse me, Kemp Van I, or call 852-2795. The Rotary Club of Hanford will host its golf tournament at the Kings County Country Club on Monday, September 12th, from 10:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Space is limited to 120 players. Reservations are on a first-paid basis. Proceeds from this event will be split among area veteran service organizations. You can contact Joan Darling at 559-977-9999 regarding signups and sponsorship. Kings County Special Olympics will be having their chili cook-off on Saturday, September 24th, at the Hanford Civic Park. Vendors and teams are needed, so please email kingscountyspecialolympics@gmail.com for details. For upcoming agenda items, admin has one item for consideration regarding the presentation of the employee of the second quarter of 2022. Behavioral Health has three items, consideration to approve an agreement with Inspiring Pathways Incorporated for short-term residential therapeutic program services, and consideration for two agreements with California Mental Health Services Authority, one for the Central Valley Suicide Prevention Hotline Program, and one for the Behavioral Health Quality Improvement Program. Community Development Agency has one item for consideration regarding a public hearing, tentative of partial cancellation of land conservation, Williamson Act, contract number 1679. The district attorney has one item, excuse me, for consideration, the annual report for real estate fraud protection, or excuse me, prosecution trust fund program. Fire has three items, consideration to approve a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan contract, consideration to approve the purchase of a rapid shelter system, and presentation of the updated OES website and Be Ready Kings campaign. Health has one item for consideration, the COVID-19 county update. HSA has five items, consideration for approval for a project room key amendment, amended occupancy agreement with Stardust KTHA LLC, approval of project room key agreement with KCao, consideration for approval for a project room key amended agreement with Heers Management Incorporated, and consideration for approval for a project room key amendment and agreement with Good Guard Security Services. Public Works has one item for consideration regarding a response to grand jury report titled Follow Up to the Grand Jury 2021 Pedestrian Safety in Kettleman City, a community's longstanding plea for improvement. And Sheriff has one item, consideration for the approval with agreement with PermaTim LLC, did I say that right? Permedium? That concludes that report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hill? Lance, you want to talk about your job fair coming up, September 8th?
As you guys know, it's been a rough year for workforce. Hiring notices have been going up across the county. We're looking for potentially hiring between 1,000 and 2,000 jobs out of the job fair. There will be hiring on the spot, so the more people we get to show up, the better. They will be doing interviews. Please be dressed to impress and get ready to see if you can find your next career.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to add an event? Seeing no one come forward. We do have a couple of items under closed session, a workers' comp and a litigation, and if there are any actions, we'll report them out next Tuesday. I want to bring your attention, the Board of Equalization will have a meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., and then the board will reconvene in August, on August 23rd, for a regular board meeting at 9:00 a.m. With that, thank you very much, everyone. Please have a safe trip home. Remember, it's hot outside, drink plenty of fluids, especially it has ice in it. And be safe, and we will see you next time. Thank you very much.